Open up, uh, speak with a prayer and like to, uh, ask the other whites to say a prayer for us.
Heavenly Father, we call your precious name this morning, thanking you, oh Lord, for another wonderful day. Lord, Father God, we want to thank you for your blessings, uh, day in and day out. Father God, we just pray that you continue to watch over us and guide us. Lord, coming up to this court, we pray, oh Lord, that you, uh, touch our hearts and then lead us in the right direction and in the things that will be pleasing to your sight as well as the beneficial of the Newton County citizens. It's in Jesus' name we're praying, amen.
Amen. All right.
Call the meeting order. Uh, we do have a court. I'd like to acknowledge all the guests that are here today. Have anybody signed up for public speaking? Okay. All right, uh, we're gonna do item number one, uh, consent agenda, uh, the minutes from the previous meeting. I couldn't see. Yes. All right, uh, we got, uh, those deportation bonds, uh, monthly departmental reports. Uh, do y'all have those in your packet as far as commissions?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Let be here, Judge, someone be here.
No. No, they just sent it, sent their report in, uh, I've read over, uh, according to the, uh, E S D number one, is their report in the commission bracket? Okay, their report's in y'all's packet?
Yeah.
So, um, I need a motion to, uh, accept the consent agenda.
Go move.
All right, motion is made by Commissioner Hopson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, uh, all against. All right, uh, we'll go right in, deliberate and consider action on the following items. Item number one is a presentation by Paul Price, a petition regarding Kelly's public, uh, information request.
The county releases some documents just after the play. I intend to comment on the issue at hand.
Okay. So, I guess we'll take no action on item number one. All right, item number two is received presentation from Robert Parker and Scott Matthews was high lines on the boot two, uh, grant.
For everybody, I'm Robert Parker. 给您一个 grant to bring all three internet services, uh, internet, I brought it to the younger suburb area of Newton County. Showed up here to see you guys in question. Scott Matthews, Glenn Sherwood, uh, you have any questions, please, answer the way.
Okay, uh, yeah, I do have one request, if y'all could fill it. You know, Spectrum has been on the south end of the county and they have, uh, destroyed, uh, basically the rural water supply. Yo, basically our county has, uh, rural water supply, you know, and they were put in years ago. People that's working with them now, you know, they got an idea where the water lines are, but it's gonna be very hard to locate them. So, uh, when y'all working around any of the rural water supplies, you know, please, uh, let them know, uh, because they, it, they have devastated the South Newton County water supply.
Are they locatable as far as something, need the wish and state can follow?
Wish and state can follow most, yeah, well, some were put in with a grant years ago. We got plastic lines with no tracer wires, so, and the people that put the lines in are long gone, you know, years ago, so it's just very hard to locate the land. They got a general idea of where they're at, but.
Is there any, I'm gonna provide us with a type of map of those areas?
We can, it's gonna be, uh, like the Toledo Bend area, Toledo Bend waters fly, Birdsville waters fly, uh, Tribe Creek area. And then you get down to Deweyville, it's gonna be the South Newton County.
Okay.
So, um, and that's, you know, the rural areas, you don't have the water supply, a lot of the rural areas, but in some of the more dense populated, you do have a rural water supply.
So, so a lot of what the judge is talking about, uh, that was in my precinct. And what we've learned is that there was no pre-planning between the county, Spectrum, the water supply folks, there was no communication to the general public that this was even coming. We, as a court, we were all shocked, as a county, we were shocked when they showed up with the bunch of holes in the ground. So what I would like to ask is that between now and the time you start, we have a meeting with all of the stakeholders, the representative from each of the water departments, I don't know, Brother Danny, who you got down there that could come, about your water department, but everyone be included. Because we not seen schedules, you know, coded, uh, work schedules on where they're gonna start, how many people they're gonna have, what communication's gonna be, and Judge, you mentioned to me potentially this group starting on the north.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would prefer y'all start on the north end, you know, and then, you know, because you got the one company working on the south end, you know, if y'all could, you know, work, make a little and you keep going.
Honestly, I'm, I'm surprised that they're building the area knowing.
Well, there was a previous grant.
Or wireless pieces of that, fixed wireless.
And then, uh, DecCOG has another grant for broadband, so, and then the boot grants, so together is about, uh, close to fifty million dollars in, in broadband going through Newton County at this time.
And, and that's why we're here is to introduce ourselves and start those conversations, um, before we go in, start digging, like to coordinate with the local municipalities.
Yes.
Uh, we will start engineering, uh, not on a basis of, um, here in the next couple of weeks. And we were picking out our densest areas to work out, and we'll absolutely work with the county, um, on how you guys would like us to go. Just a few, about five hundred and fifty-two miles of, uh, construction that were planted in your county to serve, uh, in total, we have what we call Boot Two, and then Boot Plus, which is the houses that we're gonna pass as we're building. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and serve those, it comes out to be about five thousand four hundred and twenty-four passings in your county. Like I said, we don't really have a formal presentation, we wanted to just introduce ourselves, and if you guys could pass our information on to whoever you think's certain, we'd love to speak to them. Once the engineering is through and we have a good idea where we're going to wanna run, we would love to come back and, uh, meet with everyone and, uh, have a full meeting and do some coordination. And, uh, I understand you guys have your own power, um, that you maintain and run.
No, it's the city here.
City, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the county is, uh, like Jasper Newton and D P six and Electric.
Okay.
How long will the engineering take?
Hopefully not long, um, three, four weeks.
Okay, so what I would request again is that maybe you guys get together and say, we need to develop a presentation with a timeline, scope of work, where we're gonna communicate a work schedule, then get with the judge's office and set up a meeting with the county so we can get all the commissioners back there, and then each commissioner can bring their respective parties. Uh, we know best who to bring to the meet. We can bring them all and then we can all get on the same page, but I think the judge has got an excellent ideal and storing them to leave, I'll just say, the north end of the county. The ground on the south end of the county has been demolished, it's the lowest point in the county's forest water table. So, highest water table, lowest elevation. If you go down there right now, your machines are not gonna hold up because the ground's already, they're just, you know, we've smoothed them back over trying to fix the landscape, so the next couple of weeks while you got engineering going on, set that meeting up and get a good presentation for us and then come to it thinking we're gonna soar up north and head toward the south.
And we appreciate that, and we'll coordinate that, uh, working on the preliminary design right now. They'll go ahead and what is called field verification, um, so we'll see the trucks out in your, uh, county, but, uh, once we get everything preliminary designed, we'll reach out to you guys and start coordinating. Do you have local, um, departments that do locates? In the county, or do you all subcontract that up?
That's all through, uh, USIG.
Okay.
Well, the city may locate their own utility.
Okay.
Uh, but as far as the county, we don't have any you locate.
The, the different entities on the south end, we have a gas company, they doing all their locates. We have a, a water department doing all their locates in USIG, like you're talking about, but like I said, they're exhausted.
Right, so the biggest problem is, you know, they're small rural water districts and gas, you know, the gas lines down in, in, uh, the South County area, they're not members, they don't pay the yearly dues for eight-one-one, so when you put in the locates, they never get them.
They're a tier two. And all that with them, and, and we're not here to make the county fly difficult, we have twenty-four months essentially from January, uh, to build this, uh, five hundred and fifty-two miles. Um, so, but we'll work through a combination of aerial underground and try to keep this less impact as possible.
That would be great.
Anytime in the county has any kind of questions or concerns, please reach out to Mike Harper and I can and, uh, contact with Ross and Glenn, our folks here, and, uh, we'll, we'll get on.
One thing to learn, the hardware in the south end of the county, what was done in Jasper County by Spectrum, most of it was done aerial. And depending on who you talk to back and forth between Jasper Newton Electric and Spectrum, there is a degree of comp, uh, com- conflict on who's at fault there about not going aerial on the south end of the county. So we need to have Jasper Newton Electric in that meeting and, and figure out what we gotta do to go aerial, because that's much preferred, especially with what we just went through, I mean, anyways.
Before we, before we get him back.
For us as well, and if you can give us or facilitate those, uh, introductions, we would appreciate it. We have reached out to them and, uh, have not received, uh, much return calls for any kind of information, to be honest with you. We're trying to coordinate with them on their whole location, so we can design that, that, uh, so you could, uh, anything you could. We would rather go aerial and it's faster, less impact.
You got that, Judge, and that would, you know, if you, Judge, even if you could get that done on Spectrum coming north. Not too late for like to up here?
Well, I think as far as the city limits, they're supposed to utility poles, uh, to keep them disrupted and the water and the gas lines, so. So, uh, they've already worked out that agreement with the city, you know, for city limits, but I don't know as far as county. They've got an agreement with D P sixes or Jasper Newton, I know some of the areas are going above ground. Those people are complaining, why are they on my land? I didn't give them easement, but a lot of people don't realize, you know, if you give Jasper Newton a utility easement, you know, they can turn around and give somebody else access on their easement, you know? Unless you stayed on there, it's for electricity you sold.
We need, uh, hang before we, we have reconstruction letters that we send out there to residents, saying that we'll be in that area, we'll coordinate that with the area. And then twenty-four hours in advance, we hang door hanger, that door hanger will kind of cover you the difference between road right away, utility easement. And, uh, you know, to give them a number to go also inundating your office with plants, uh, that, you know, a bunch of best guys digging up my yard. So we try to, try to lessen that burden.
Yeah, well, basically, we just wanna have a good working relationship and, you know, broadband is, is much needed in, in the rural areas, so, um, as painless as possible, you know, to get, get it done.
That is our, our goal, and like I said, I, we didn't really have a meeting formal, we just wanna introduce ourselves, tell you we're coming, and that, uh, see if there's any concerns that you might have, and, uh, we'll definitely set that up and have more.
God, any questions for?
Well, it's, it's, uh, communication, so that we can all be on the same, have the same understanding.
Yes. Well, thank y'all, thank y'all for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We look forward to the finished product.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll be reaching out shortly, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, item number three is, uh, accept dedication of public interest in road or right-of-way from Joey Alton, uh, ladder?
Ladder.
And M W F V Sabine River LLC in the existing private road commonly known as Sudeth Bluff Cemetery pursuant to chapter twenty-eight of the Texas Transportation Code. And that's a road that you're wanting to make into a, or asking for, make it to a county road?
Yeah, and just for the, uh, for the court's education, Misty will talk a little bit more about where we stand on the, uh, on paperwork, but just describing the road, it's, you know, about a tenth of a mile of road, and, um, it's a road off of County Road forty-one twenty-two, it goes to a public cemetery for those residents living in the pocket area in the, uh, the Nichols Creek area. Right now, it's, it's, it's a road that likes an easement or anything else, they just use it. And it's, it's a very sandy road, it has one mud slash water crossing in it, and, uh, it's going to be very minimal cost for me to go in and put a small twelve-inch cover to it and rock the road, but it's definitely the right thing to do for the people that live in that area, and I'm excited about being able to do it. If court supports that, when we get the paperwork done, um, I wanna make it, wanna reschedule this item for March the eleventh, because next court is not a good date, Misty.
Yeah, so we have two landowners that are affected, they are both, uh, voluntarily dedicating the the right-of-way road to the county. Uh, I've had one landowner who decided with dedication, the other one they're still in the process of getting that to the company. So it's gotta go up through, you know, our county channels, but anyway, when we get those, they'll be filed, we'll be counting order. Then I can send those to y'all and it's order that you will sign accepting the dedications, and once you accept the dedications, you accept that, you accept it and.
So that'll be back on our gen on March eleventh.
Okay, so. We'll table this item until, um, March eleventh, Commissioners Court Meeting. All right, Commissioner White has made a motion, Commissioner Benson's second, all in favor? All against? All right, item number four is received presentation of year-end report from E S D number one. Now, they have, uh, sent their report in, uh, it's in all y'all's packets, um, we don't have anybody here today to present it. Um, if y'all wanna look it over, we can accept the.
Judge, I'm gonna just go ahead and make the motion that we accept the report as presented, if there's anything that we do other than accept it.
Yes, that's all we're gonna say, I'll make that motion. All right, motion is made by Commissioner Powell.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Benson. All in favor? All against? All right, item number six, discuss and consider approving memorandum of understanding agreement between Newton County and Mauriceville, uh, Bud.
Mauriceville Utility, okay.
Okay. Oh, I skipped number five. Uh, discuss and approve signing hazard mitigation grant program, state award package for Newton County Maurice, Mauriceville Municipal Utility District. I couldn't say that word. Uh, so the county got a grant for.
Our grant for a while just hasn't been approved and we got it and we're moving forward with it, which is in your place.
Yeah, it's at least been four or five years since they applied for the grant, but the generator is for the, um, utility district, uh, to, so it's three hundred and.
I ain't telling this grant.
Yes, but they have agreed to pay it.
I have.
Yes.
The total sub-grant amount is one hundred and eleven thousand nine eighty-one, twenty, ninety percent, uh, federal share, ten percent local match, so it's eleven thousand one ninety-eight twelve for the local share, which they have, which that's the next item, the MOU, that they're in grants to pay the locals, so it just doesn't cost the county anything.
What can this, your chef? It's, it's been a while, um, matter of fact, just kind of did the same thing, they were just thinking about locating lines, that's what we've been for the past eight months, the spectrum down in our area as well. Uh, my name is Jerry Walton, I'm the Assistant General Manager of Mauriceville, uh, just the utility district. So we're so very grateful for it's finally come through, I know there's been a lot of hands even before my time, we're. So, uh, anyway, we just appreciate y'all's work on getting this thing done, uh, allowing us to help better serve Newton County and that, and that area overall with sixty-two, the old champion sites.
You guys are going to go ahead and provide the match portion of it.
Yeah, so, so what happens today is after everything's voted and approved on today, what we will do is at our next board meeting, we will present a memorandum of understanding to our Board of Directors, so that all of that is signed off on, and once that is done, then we'll be in contact with you guys to do the match, do the processes.
How many people do you service out of that water?
Uh, in that, in that immediate, immediate area, I don't exactly have an initial account, uh, because that well site is looped in with our well sites. Uh, if some of you, just a little bit of understanding, so Mauriceville, uh, Mud, we're three hundred square miles, we're in Orange County, Newton County, and Jasper County. We have five wellful sites, uh, our most northern well side is the old champion well side there, off of sixty-two, County Road thirty-one thirty-nine, so. So that, that system actually helps to service all of our area, and, uh, our capacity level that we have, uh, we have a whole lot more capacity than customers that we have, so, um, as we continue to expand and grow, we'll continue to expand up into the old canyon. As that, as that land develops, we'll continue to go north in Jasper County, and we're heading west on northern Orange County into Jasper County off of Texel Road, which is, uh, twenty-two as well, so.
So, so in Newton County, there's approximately five hundred residents that this well, this generator will benefit, just in that immediate area, not including the other support for the other well site, so it's a, whoever set this grant up did, did a lot of good for that area.
All right, I need a motion to approve signing hazard mitigation grant program state award package for Newton County Maurice, Mauriceville S U D generator project.
I'll make that motion, Judge.
All right, motion is made by Commissioner Powell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
All against? All right, now we'll go on item number six is discuss and consider approving memorandum of understanding agreement between Newton County and Mauriceville S U D.
So this is, this is basically saying here today that we understand that the Board of Directors, Bud, will pay and approve to pay the match portion of the grant.
Yes, that's correct.
Definitely make that motion.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell. Second by Commissioner Hopson, all in favor? All against? All right, item number seven, approve violence against women's act, special prosecutor project grant resolution, and that's, uh, Ms. Courtney?
So, this is a resolution that the county agrees that violence against women is a very very important topic, something that's the county's passion, and about combating violence against women. Essentially, this resolution in agreeing that that is an important issue, um, says that we will pay a match on a grant applying for funds to fund a special prosecutor that will prosecute and assist in cases that involve crimes against women. Um, that prosecutor is John Burt, this grant is, we had it fifteen years, so this will be the sixteenth year to have this grant. And it started actually by Misty when she was the deputy, and has continued all these years, and we've kept up with it. The county's match on it is already in the budget, so it's not gonna require anything additional. And, and last year, we were the only, only in the cog that applied for this funding source, so there was money left over, and so the cog reached out and asked me to increase our application for this year, and in the past, we applied for forty-five thousand, and then the county matched, um, and so this year, I'm applying for sixty-five thousand, but that will decrease the county's, the twenty thousand will come off of what the county has matched. We still will need our match on it, but, um, anyway, I'm just asking to approve this resolution and the county in agreeing that the, that's in the best interest of the citizens of Newton County that we offer this and maintain our special prosecutor that, that helps with those, he helps with protective orders and assisting victims in court and assisting those crimes.
Courtney, I have a question for you, so.
Yes, sir.
Just for the attorneys, you have three attorneys in your office, correct, including yourself?
Yes.
How much money does Newton County taxpayers pay to support those three attorneys? Oh, approximately?
It's one point. Fifty thousand, maybe?
It's minimal, it's just, that's why it's.
Yeah, maybe fifty, yeah, they pay like them. The county's match on this grant is about thirty-three thousand, because I also use, part of the match that I give is from our state funds, um, Senate bill funds, so those other funds I also use to make our match, so the actual general fund amount is, including benefits, is around thirty thousand. Um, and when the county, the taxpayers don't pay anything from Misty, and I'm made one hundred percent out of Senate bill money, I make about two thousand dollars a year from that. I think it's, yeah, that would, so I would say I'm probably less than forty thousand that the county pays total for the three of us.
So what I was, I was just thinking, we pay about twelve thousand dollars a year to the attorneys across the room. So I just, you know, a lot of times we don't do a good job of communicating, sharing with our constituents what our different offices cost, and I think it's very important that we share that, you know, thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand dollars for three attorneys is all price to pay to have good attorneys.
So, anyway, I'm asking you to approve this resolution, uh, the grant application is due Thursday, so once it's approved today, I'll upload that and get it submitted, and then we'll know usually about August or September is when they'll tell us, but, um, it won't require any budget amendment. But um, it won't require any budget amendment.
Okay, hey, before we vote on that, Judge, I gotta clean that up. I, I was trying to do good work and didn't, we don't pay anything for our new attorney, Misty Spaschek. And we pay less than three thousand dollars for our district attorney, and the other money goes to this special, is Georgia's special prosecutor. On average, I was averaging out, but we don't pay anything for the new, for ours, recent hiring.
Alright, I make a motion, we approve the Violence Against Women's Act Special Prosecutor Project Grant Resolution.
I second.
Alright, motion made by me, second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor? All against? Alright. Item number eight, approve county treasurer as investment officer. How much money have you made?
This is just my annual, we have to do this every year, it's the same thing, it's being appliance with our Public Funds Investment Act twenty-two big six. And it's, I have to do it annually, so.
And you have a team that works with you on this, correct? So how many people have you got on there?
I will make that motion that we make this films coordinator.
I'll second that one.
Alright. Motion made by Commissioner Benson. Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? Alright. Item number nine, approve order adopting investment policy.
This is the order that y'all are gonna adopt the policy. And it's required that we do them all separate, it's why they're all separate, I can't make them in just one lump. To item.
I said.
Alright. I make a motion, we approve the order adopting investment policy.
Second.
Alright, motion made by me, second by Commissioner Hopson, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? Alright, item number ten is approve the investment policy.
Yeah, same.
We usually bring anywhere from three thousand dollars in a quarter to six thousand dollars a quarter on interest, depends on how we. And we invested some of our. Stuff that we were investing on. But we took it, put them out and bought more out in that what we can invest in. So we don't, it was like sixteen thousand dollars cash, I think, play with, and then when some come up. And at the time of renewal, they'll call and ask me. We'll have a meeting with our. Do that, and you see all that on your, that's usually something that's in general. When I get the interest in, we give it to Sherry and she does it, general entry. Close the cash or go send all the investments.
Okay, on item number ten, have we made a motion to approve the investment policy? Are we uh, we adopted it?
Probably will make it.
Okay, uh, on item number ten, uh, I make a motion, we approve the investment policy for Newton County. Motion made by me, second by Commissioner Hopson, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? Alright. We'll move to item number eleven.
Thank y'all.
You're welcome. Discuss and consider a twenty-twenty-five budget amendment that allows access to the remaining funds that were donated to Newton County. In twenty-twenty-three by a private company to be used to improve precinct for Dewittville Park.
So I have been, since I received the agenda, I've been working on this, looking into uh how to make this happen for Commissioner Powell. And because this was money donated. Uh, the local government head was said, the county auditor or the county judge, um. I sometimes uh shall certify the receipt of all public or private grant or payment that is available for this purpose in this year. Uh, but not included in the budget for that particular year. Uh, and on that certification, the court will adopt a special budget for the limited purpose of spending that grade, that grant or aid money for its limited purpose. So instead of a budget, a budget amendment is not necessary in this case, so I'm gonna have us get um Sherry will. Uh, certify how much money uh is there in the donation, and Commissioner Powell will create. Uh, you know, simple uh special budget for that money, y'all can uh approve that and spend it for that.
Thank you.
Okay, this is money donated by Venture Global to fix up.
Yeah, this.
We've been talking about it for a couple of months, trying to figure. To work on that, yeah.
And this money is actually. Money's actually spent in unison with the project renewal group that come to the court, introduce themselves. And um, we're looking at building a walkway or fencing or something, but they're a group that actually has spent, what has been spent thus far in twenty-three when it was first budgeted and.
Well, it needs to be taped until the auditor gets statement.
I don't, I don't think we have to actually take any action on this.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Stay what we did, we'll go steps and having Sherry certified that, and how making a special, special budget, we'll come back.
Alright, we'll take no action on item number eleven. Item number twelve is discuss and if appropriate, lease the Hartburg Center Building to the South Newton Water Supply Corporation. For a dollar per year beginning in twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, so what, what's going on there, Judge, is, uh, the commissioners before me, I don't know if it was Mr. Thompson or my father. But one of the two gentlemen agreed uh to allow the water company to park there because. They outgrew, they have a small piece of land there with a water tower on it, and he built a small uh laydown yard, well, they, they've outgrown their laydown yard, they can't park there anymore. Did that many years ago, so they park here and then maintain the grounds. We rented this building um to the people for fifty dollars uh an event. And when we changed the base structure, when the senior center come along, uh, we changed the base structure with the same realty fee, this, this building become. Uh, unused for, by the residents, they use the senior centers much nicer, and uh, there's a maintenance cost for this building. So the water company has requested um. The use of the building because we're not using it, I think it's great, it keeps the county from having to maintain and spend money on the maintenance of the building. Uh, and then at the end of the day, it helps the residents, so I would like to make the motion that we, and Misty, you've been involved in this as well?
Looked up, go to it, and I was, what you know, we're just discussing, so if it's gonna be a lease, uh, I think we'll have to. I would recommend offering it to anybody, uh, because. Kind of an advertising kind of thing, but I think we could do a general agreement. Uh, and that way it's not a lease, it's an improvement.
Okay.
Uh, and in fact, if ever what the member.
Okay, well then I'll. I'll make a motion that we table this, Judge.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Powell.
Yes, sir.
Is the one you just read up?
No, sir. So this, excuse me, so thanks for asking that question, there may be others that would ask that question, probably when you did, but this one is in need of maintenance.
Needing the money.
Uh, the air conditioner needs work on it.
No, it's just.
It needs work, uh, it's, it's a very old building and needs some work. There, it's, it's a great opportunity for them, they can set up their offices there, they don't have any office space, they don't have any parking place, and they are crucial. For our community, that water and water so that. But no, sir, we have a plenty of money in this building and.
Are they gonna uplaid it or upkeep it or?
They're gonna, what we've talked about, they met last night, I spoke with them, and they will maintain the building. Now, what I told them last night, and we'll, we'll talk more when we get into this in our local agreement. And it's certainly good to have uh assistance from a county attorney perspective on this, but. What I told them is that county will want to maintain the liability insurance on the grounds because we not, we're not selling the grounds, we still own it. So we'll want to protect ourselves when we talk about ensuring the county, but as far as the building, we're not going to insure the building. Not going to ask them to insure the building because it's not. An asset that would pay to insure, it, it's a center block building with old tile and old ceiling. Just. At one time, I'm sure the people were elated to have it, I'm not knocking whoever built it and what it was done, but. You know, time goes on and it's, it's dated, and now they've got a much better place, and the court is refurbished and. But it'll work good for the water department, they'll go in and clean it up and. Be, be a win for everybody, I believe.
And then you talk about to sell it to them?
So. So there was discussion on giving it to them. And then is that the right thing to do with tax dollar money? Misty and I wrestled with that, said with the financial status of the county, probably not, uh. Thought this was a better approach or idea, just, you know, let's just, because they may get a grant and build something somewhere else, and then we can say, okay, we'll sell this property now, right? So, we had, we, we talked about that early on, but if we, if we sell it, we're gonna have to go for bids and. There may be someone else that comes along, Spectrum's using it right now without permission. Talked about that Friday, so some other business may come along and snatch it away from them, and if they did, I don't know that they could operate the water company, I don't know what would happen.
Well, and, and two, I don't think they have the funds to be able to purchase. You know, being the rural water supply.
We're discussing, and I would suggest instead of tabling it, tabling would suggest that the exact wording will come back again, so just take no action.
Okay.
That way you can. Pre-ordid, whether it's gonna be in a local agreement. Approving it in a local agreement, or whatever it's gonna be, it's not gonna be the exact wording today.
Okay. Good point, so we'll just take no action, but personally, I, I think that the interlocal agreement is the way to go, if we open this up for bids. And sell it out front, someone bids our water department, the citizens would suffer.
I think if you have bids and somebody takes a higher bid, you can still warrant it to a lower one if you can justify the reason that's for the best interest of the citizens, so you can still. I'm not pushing them, I'm just making sure that all options are considered, so.
So what the judge knows that we, not everyone's privy to, is they've got a very large hurdle ahead of them from uh maintenance issue on their towers. So all of their funds that they have is going to be. Required to meet those T C Qs on sandblasting and painting, so I don't think them buying it's.
So. We'll just take no action on item number twelve. And move on to item number thirteen, approve the remaining funds. It's one twenty-five, hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. From the twenty-twenty-four Sheriff's Office budget to be added to the twenty-twenty-five Sheriff's Office budget. To assist in funding essential expenditures.
Good point. Uh, I'd ask y'all to consider rolling the money over to twenty-four into the twenty-five budget in the interest of public safety, there's a lot of different items that we need in our jail. We've got five jail doors that are inoperable, we've got uh three of those are internally, two are the, two Sally Court door. Uh, another thing is the cop time, we have approved uh a lot of cop time over there, a lot of it was approved in twenty-twenty-four, so I'm trying to pay that down. Uh. The uh jail cameras, that's been a big issue, Sheriff Burby and I have been dealing with, consulting Janet Ponchet, and we need jail cameras in our jail. We have got to get officers and safety back there, it's uh, that, so I got a phone call Sunday from JP about the jail. If we uh, we've got to fix those things, and I, you know, my fear is that if the money is not rolled over, not to use it out of my twenty-five budget, I'm gonna be in a budget deficit at the end of the year. So I'll ask y'all to consider that, and uh, the jail is a vital part of the public safety in our county, and we need to make sure it's fully operational while we're in that jail. Uh, like I said, the cop time, we've got anywhere from eighty-one to three hundred and eleven cop time hours, and we need to pay that down, and I would like to pay down out of this twenty-four for maybe five hundred and twenty. Got any questions?
You know, that's something the state does mandate that the county, uh, that's the only thing they mandate, county provides a jail. So. Um. You know, I, I toured the jail uh with um the chief deputy a week ago, and um, I was. Shocked, you know, back in the eighties, uncle's sheriff. And not tour at the jail, there was virtually no changes in the jail, other than the linoleum on the countertop is worn out now to the point where it's missing in places. Uh, the doors that you talked about, the door from the dispatcher's office and. Just really am what I seen, the door from the dispatcher's office into the hallway where the cells are. They tried it several times, it wouldn't lock, and, and you, you could just open it. And uh, I know that one of our JPs was a jailer there at one time, and there was an inmate that come through that jail and assaulted her uh at that time, so that could. It's, it's been demonstrated that it's a safety issue, and when you leave and you go down to the Sally Court where you bring prisoners in. What I was told by the people that know is that that door hasn't worked in many, many years. And I visited with uh one of our JPs about this as well, so the inmates, as I understand it, are brought in the door by the offices. And the way the jail works, I'm, I'm getting in your biz now because I was shocked. The way the jail works is when you go to go into the jail, if you're an officer or the sheriff, before you go in. You unlock a lock box and put your pistol in the lock box and lock it back and take that key and go into jail. Because you don't want the element, you don't want a criminal element around those guns, right, and a tussle for a gun, well, the way it is now, you bring them right through where you lock the guns up. You don't, you, you don't come into Sally Court, and then when you go around the other, there's two more doors that, that don't lock and uh. I know what you said is, is right, but I mean, whatever we do here today is one thing, but I would really like for us to tour the jail as a court. And, and look at these things, I went in to where the dispatchers work, there's this huge screen, and some of you guys may know this. Uh, you, so you down on the end, I, you know it, you've been here, right? Uh, so there's this huge screen with all of the cameras separated, there's more cameras not working than what is working.
That's an officer's safety, so the jailer, there's obviously a jail and dispatch set up, so when one goes into the jail, make a jail Jay. In, in a perfect world, his or her partner would be able to monitor on the computer screen, well now, you can't do it, I mean, they're, they're back there by themselves, you know, so that's a big, big issue. Uh, we're gonna start changing the way we, in uh prisoner intake in the jail, we're utilizing Sally Court going through there, but I've gotta get that door fixed. And uh, that way if there's a bad subject, he's not going by the secretary, he can be in the Sally Court, it's a more secure way. Um, so, you know, keep everybody safe.
Well, I want to correct you. With all due respect, in the perfect world, we're not, it's not the perfect world, it's the absolutely only safe thing to do.
Yeah.
It's, it's not what's perfect, it's what's even feasible.
Sure.
You gotta be able to see your coworker when they go in there to handle an inmate, they get into trouble, you gotta be able to know that they're there, right?
It's our goal to revolutionize the Sheriff's Office. Technology and a modern way of policing, so that's our, that's our intent.
The next law, I don't think, and I guess I worked maintenance under thirteen months, I've been about a third of my time in jail.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, Commissioner, I forgot about that, I didn't even think about that, you know.
You know, my one month of being there, so.
But what you're talking about is not revolutionizing, you're just talking about bringing it up to where it works?
Yeah. Keep trying to move forwards. Appreciate it.
My only concern in that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was.
My only concern is, is the money, you know, we, we allocated uh building a tower in South County. Uh, and that's. Uh, gonna cost five hundred and forty thousand, uh.
Pay a hundred thousand of that, um, the court is not free, uh, hasn't been put on the agenda to do a budget amendment for the other four hundred and forty thousand, so I don't think that needs to be discussed at this. Point because you guys are gonna have to discuss that, um. With that being said, we do have some money, um, that we're coming back to the general fund, hopefully soon. And um, but we do have this money, it's just going to, we're not gonna have the. Money to be able to maintain at least three months of county funds, and that's what they like to have. Um. Leftover that's not broken, if we pay, I mean, like I said, I don't want to discuss any. If we pay, I mean, like I said, I don't want to discuss anything on the tower. It's not been brought to court and it's something that you guys are gonna have to vote on. What his need is today for me, it sounds like a hundred and sixty.
We do bring a government for.
So I believe that that right here is the subject at hand, and that's what we need to vote on today.
You mentioned money coming back to court. Oops. So what have you, what are we talking about?
We had, uh, paid, uh, for, um, a grant upfront because our 2022 audit wasn't completed. Um, our audit should be getting completed and once, and we've already submitted to be paid reverse for that. And once the audit is completed and filed, then we get our money back that we've already paid.
Is that on the water current? That's on the eighteen water.
It's three hundred and fifty thousand plus. So was that.
Only problem is that is, you know, we don't have the money in hand, you know, and I, you know, and it could be.
Have the money in hand, but like I just said, like the backup, if something was to happen.
Yeah.
And we have to maintain the county for.
Well, I was talking about like the grant money. We don't have it.
Oh, we don't have it in hand, but we do have.
You know, and it could be the way the GLO and stuff works, it could be, it could be a month, it could be a year, you know, and that's, I'm just worried about no backup. So some catastrophic.
Just a question. How can we not do this?
I know we got to do.
We gotta do it, right?
We've got to figure out a way to get it done. You know, especially the locks and the jail cells. But my main deal is if something happens, you know, uh, just worried about the money not being.
And the jail cameras, other big items that we've got to do.
So, so let's talk about it. Let's say, let's say something happens and the money's not there. Of all that money we've got budgeted in other, other areas.
We can take that.
If we had to, if we had to do without something else, we would do without something else versus not having what we need in a jail. So I agree with that. I tell you, I'm, I'm sitting here and I'm just gonna say, based on what the sheriffs need, I, I'm gonna make the motion that we approve budget amendment to support the sheriff's office with a hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents from two thousand and twenty-four sheriff's office budget that was rolled over in the general fund in two thousand and twenty-five.
I'd like to add one more thing. I know it's a lot of money, but I, I can't put trash bag.
Oh, I, I know, I know. And that's one thing we do, and that's, and that's why I brought it up. That's one thing the state requires. We do have to put out a jail. But I just wanted everybody to be aware of it.
You know, I want to say this. We all want to set this to be a precedent that where if somebody doesn't spend all their money in their budget, they want to roll it over the next year. This is only because Colton came in, seen the needs, it's an emergency needs, and that's the reason why we're doing that. Next year at this time, Colton's not gonna come to the court. He said, I haven't spent this money. I need to roll it over. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we're not setting a precedence here. That you don't just roll your money over if you don't spend it that year.
And one more thing. Everything, it was, you know, it was, uh, 2024, this was when we had planned to, to do all this.
Yeah.
Fix the jail cam or stuff like that. The majority of the cop time was accrued in 2024. So it's, it's just, I think it needs to be paid by 2024.
Should have been spent. Yeah. And, and you know, in defense of the sheriff in 2024, he may very well have tried to do it, and you may face that same hurdle. That you can't, you know, you, maybe a plan that keeps you from moving out, spending this as quickly and fixing these as quickly. So I don't want to throw rocks at the.
He's been working on.
It was a team effort. Team effort, but they, they just go slow. It just takes time.
Just like, just like the, uh, intercom. It took guardians eight months.
I mean, it wasn't like he wasn't trying. He was.
Yeah, we worked on it for probably four months together trying to get it.
Thing that needed to be said. All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner White, all in favor? All against? All right. Item number fourteen, approve purchase of four trucks which would be added to the patrol fleet for 2025.
So, so once again, you know, the, uh, maintain equipment, we've gotta have, we've gotta have police stations out there. We've got four that are down that we just found out about first part of January. Two of them dealers in there, they've got a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand miles on them. So I don't, I can't, I don't think it's physically possible to put a brand new ten thousand dollar engine in a police truck that's got, you know, a hundred and fifty plus thousand miles on it. And I believe that we, uh, again, I think we need, we need four vehicles to, uh.
We've got one sitting out here that needs transmission.
Yes, sir.
Uh, two with, needs a motor.
Got one that's, uh, it's a twenty seventeen model and it leaks, the roof leaks and there is, uh, you know, that particular deputy, all the equipment gets wet because the roof's leaking.
How many miles is on that? It's pretty high.
Hundred and seventy-nine, last I checked. And, uh, we've got a couple. We're gonna try to start getting rid of some vehicles and, uh, you know, anybody in the county, you know, some of the older vehicle. There's probably still decent vehicle, but it's not enough police.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to put a deputy out you know, high speed pursuit or running up and down the road and, you know, hundred and eighty, hundred and seventy, two hundred thousand miles.
Right.
Vehicle.
Captain Smith would just purchase him a used vehicle. Uh, you know, he's considered ad in, so he got out running, he doesn't answer calls for service. Uh, so we are trying to be discreet responsible by buying him a used vehicle, but our patrol deputies out here, I think they need to be in brand new vehicles as, as much as they can. They'll last longer and, uh, like to see them, you know.
I got, I got a question for you, Sherry. If, if we lease the vehicles, what would be the notes per year?
Well, it depends on the cost. But right now we have three already piece, what, fifteen thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
I said fifteen thousand a year. So you're going to have seven next year, three already, seven, those would be, I figured it'd be about a hundred and thirty.
Yeah. So they're seventy thousand dollars a piece. That's fully outfitted, ready to go to work.
Of his budget next year for vehicles would go up about five thousand.
If you order this year, you probably won't get it next year.
Yeah, but you pay for it. He wouldn't pay a note this year. So this year he just paid for the three that he already has.
But we have to approve it for him to be able to order them.
Yes.
For next year.
Budget would increase sheriff's department by about fifty-five, just some.
So you mentioned, uh, Captain being more of a head man. I, I will say he was very present during the snowstorm.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, but he's, he's the crime scene guy. So he don't, you know, he's not responding, running lights and sirens all the time like.
Not running a hundred, he's armed. Not beating him coming at you a hundred and forty miles an hour with a hundred and eighty thousand on the front end.
Right.
But I don't want my wife beating him.
No, no. You know, we, uh, had a deputy get a little first one yesterday down in Deweyville. Uh, same thing, you know, his particular vehicle had, had transmission issues, so trying to, trying to work to get them an upgraded vehicle. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. So we need a motion to approve the purchase of four trucks which would be added to the patrol fleet for twenty twenty, actually, it'd be added to the patrol fleet in twenty twenty-six.
As soon as we get them, sometimes they're, maybe six, eight months. As soon as we can get them.
You might, you might be careful of the word motion where if for some reason can or Texas canceled an order you got this year, you could get them, you know. I'll make a motion. All right. And I'm gonna say, uh, approve the purchase of four trucks which will be added to the patrol fleet for 2025. And Commissioner Hopson made the motion.
When you said added to the patrol fleet for twenty twenty, can we change it to say added to patrol fleet as soon as possible or as soon as available or something like that?
Okay, we can do that. Uh, added to the patrol fleet, uh, as soon as vehicle become available.
I'd add one more thing. Uh, starting in January, we have actually, the captain has compiled a, a particular binder for each vehicle in our fleet. So we give up all maintenance records, oil changes, tire rotations. We've implemented a policy, uh, every other whole change, we get your tires rotated. So we're trying to reduce costs by being efficient and changing the vehicle. Uh, so I just wanted to add that. We're trying to, uh, that way whenever we set that vehicle, it's ready to retire, you can, oh, it was changed, tire rotated, you know everything about that from beginning to end.
Trying to be proactive instead of reactive.
Yes, sir.
So got a motion by Commissioner Hopson, I second. Second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor? All against? All right. Item number fifteen is budget amendments.
I, uh, which is, it was approved, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Thirteen.
Okay, so we need to make, make the motion to approve.
Re-approved.
Okay. So that's all. Yes, it was already approved, so no additional budget. So we have no additional budget amendments? All right. So we'll move to item number sixteen. Payment of bill.
Okay, on the payment of bills, it's gonna be eleven thousand, a little over eleven thousand dollars more than what we're given because we received all our light bills and Philly bills. We have to get those paid or else we're gonna have to wait until. So they were added, we'll get you in the coffee as soon as this bill.
You just, when you read it out, is that gonna be in the general funds?
It's gonna be in the general.
But one seventy-six would be something different.
Yeah, it's a hundred and eighty-eight thou, our general fund, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Reading Bridge precinct three, sixty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Reading Bridge precinct four, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. Commissioner's special precinct one, nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. Commissioner's special precinct two, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Bishop's special precinct three, six thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Commissioner's special precinct four, eleven thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents. Record preservation, two hundred dollars, solid waste disposal, two thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy cents. Navy County Library, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Historical cost rating, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Grants, eighteen thousand, seven dollars and fifty cents. College fund, two hundred and seventy dollars and ten cents. For a total of all funds, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty.
And the grant, the grant cost, I see that, you know, sixteen thousand, two fifty to title, what was that? Will that come back or was that raw cost that the taxpayers are gonna have now?
That comes out of the grant portion. If you notice, oh, seventy-six, none of that money is taxpayer. That's all grant money that's coming in. The only thing that you're gonna see out of the taxpayer, the general fund, Reading Bridge and such, but any kind of grant funds, that is strictly grant money that's come into the.
And the hundred and seventy-six from the general fund, hundred thousand of that was for the down payment, uh, radio tower.
Radio tower, we paid a hundred thousand dollars this time.
And it's radio tower, fifteen radios, um, you know, just radios to be able to support, uh, the eight hundred system.
That's gonna be. All right, is there?
Make motion, a bill, second. All right, motion made by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Benson, third by Commissioner Hopson. All in favor? All against? All right. Uh, item number seventeen, uh, we're gonna enter into executive session allowed by Texas government code to consult with legal counsel regarding, legal counsel regarding CV twenty-four. Uh, there's fifteen, two seventy-seven. It's Kelly versus, uh, Cochran. And so. And so.
All right. All right, y'all, we're back in regular session. Uh, I need a motion from left side.
Make the motion with Jordan is current.
All right. That all right, motion made by commission. White taken by commission. Vincent on favor.
All against. What do you think our petition? Close then ten o'clock.
What's that?